The July 5th City Council Meeting for Vandelia is now called to order. We'll start with a moment of reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have no approval of minutes, and that brings us to Communications Petitions and Awards, which we have none. We have no public hearing. And that brings us to comments from interested citizens. So if anyone would like to make a comment tonight, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comments.
Holly Wiggins, 660 Castle Creek Drive. I'm here on behalf of AES Ohio. Just wanted to bring attention to you that we have been doing some work in the area, replacing meters with smart meters, AMI meters, which are helping with part of our whole projects over the next several years, modernizing the energy grid, adding technologies that are going to improve our experiences, customers. And part of those meters, we've been deploying so far in Vandelia. We have 6,300 of the 7,100 that we're going to deploy. So we've been working in Englewood and Vandelia. We haven't gotten a ton of calls. I just wanted to make sure I brought this to your attention in case some calls were coming in. Customers will get a phone call that says they are going to get a meter replacement soon. They will have a technician that comes in, a contracted technician. He should be fully ID'd and be able to tell you that he's here on behalf of AES Ohio, he or she, I should say. And they will get a brief, about 10-minute outage so that the meter can be exchanged, and then they should have no problems whatsoever. What this will help, though, is we can remotely turn on and off power. If you're going to move, you'll be able to call us, and we can turn it off remotely at the time. Or if you're moving in, we can turn your power back on. This also will help with the whole smart grid, once we can deploy self-healing, which is really being able to figure out where the outage is and divert power so that you are only briefly out, and most customers can be back in until we can fix whatever that outage is being caused by. So this should be an improvement for everybody. It also allows you to take full advantage of things like smart thermostats. So if you've got customers looking for smart thermostats, there's rebates out on our website for that as well. Yes?
Ms. Wiggins, is there a publication that AES has that we could perhaps reshare on social media to inform?
Yeah, I just told Amber that I'll send her some stuff that you should be able to reshare on social media. And we have been trying to get out, start working on a regular cadence of a newsletter, and I'll start making sure she gets that so that you can reshare that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. I'm Mark Couch, 10410 North Castle Road. You've probably heard, there has been some reaction to the community to placing a large 1 million square foot CSX property development next to a population area. Picture it if you had the current large building or warehouses that are running 24/7, and instead of being located across from the Airline Dairy area shopping center, now you're putting it next to homes. And with that, I think at the upcoming council meeting, you're going to be voting on whether to approve or not give an accommodation to CSX Company, which would like to move it much closer to the residential area. So just ask that many of the people who are very excited about this and concerned, at least give them an opportunity to speak about this. At the same time, if you would just drive up North Dixie and look at the roof line as to those buildings, and how close they'll be to people's homes that are right across the street, not a commercial area like we have in our other locations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Couch. I did attend the Planning Commission meeting here last week, so I did hear a lot of the comments from our residents, and we certainly appreciate them showing up and voicing their opinion. I know several other council members were also able to attend, and we're going to get the complete minutes of all the comments, so all the council members will be aware of that meeting. But that's going to be presented to us here in a couple of weeks, and then we'll be voting on it in the weeks coming after that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment? All right. Being none, I'll close the public hearing, and we have no city manager's report. Is that correct?
I'll just save it for comments afterwards.
Okay. We have no old business, and that brings us to our first resolution of the night, that being Resolution 22-R-48. Mr. McDonald, by title only.
Resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the Webster Street resurfacing engineering with IBI Group in the amount of $22,820.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city of Vandelia was recently awarded a Surface Transportation Program grant through the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission for the resurfacing of Webster Street. The total project cost, including engineering, is estimated at $979,414. The city will be receiving up to $717,131.20 in funding. And so the city, for a road that it would otherwise have to pave, will only have to pay 26.79% of that. The project is scheduled for construction in 2024 and will be sold and managed by ODOT. We prepared and advertised our requests for proposals for the engineering work. Eight firms submitted proposals for the project. As the recipient of this outside funding, this project aligns with the city's fiscal sustainability and enhancing infrastructure policy goals. I recommend rewarding, awarding this project to the IBI Group at their submitted cost of $22,820 to complete the engineering and plan preparation. This is within the capital budget and the funds that were appropriated by council.
All right. Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution 22-R-48.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley, and a second by Councilwoman Fars to approve Resolution 22-R-48 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll. Councilmember Woods?
No. Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Falek?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes. And the motion carries 7-0.
Next, we have Resolution 22-R-49.
Resolution approving the general service pay plan for employees of the city of Vandelia.
Thank you. Mr. Went.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. As I stated in our special study session, I want to walk you through the proposed changes. This is also uploaded to your iPads. We collected, or we conducted last year a compensation pay plan study throughout the year of 2021 with Clement Nelson and Associates. When I came to present to you, I presented to you several policies, one of which is the Human Resources Personnel Administration Policy 2-7, which is on the General Services Pay Plan. And one of the things about this study, in addition to evaluating internal and external equity for pay, that's our peer governments, and then also how we compensate employees internally against each other. One of the important things to do is keep that maintained, and I mentioned that I'd be bringing that back to you at a prior presentation. Within this policy, there are several reasons laid out for why I would bring this back to you, and this, of course, is the first time. One is a job title change, which we have some of those, creating positions, having different duties, and also understanding external market factors. As we undergo several recruitments, there are many of these factors at play. And so I want to walk you through some of the changes that are outlined here. If you look at the screen or you look at your tablet, what I'm showing you here is General Services Pay Plan. When we score out, the city engineer falls pretty much within the range. One of the things that we had talked about dating all the way back to my first job interview with you was the necessity for making sure that we're doing legacy planning to ensure continuity of services. This is essential, that we get a qualified person in that is likely to be a legacy hire that can learn from Director Cron. And also, one of the things that we need is, with the changes in construction, we need to find the right balance of the professional engineer who, for lack of a better term, won't just ride the desk. This is somebody that will go out, they're a registered PE, but they're able to get out and do inspections, and really get in touch with our system and what our needs are, and also serving those capital plans. You'll recall that many years ago, we had an engineer. We had gone into maybe more of a maintenance mode. When we came out of the 2020 Comprehensive Plan, the Vision Vandelia Comprehensive Plan, there's a large call for vibrancy assemble of, assembly of mixed-use zones and buildings in the downtown development. And so this is somebody who's going to contribute to that, and we look at very much as a transitional hire. And so one of the things that I pointed out, and I think this goes with any recruitment, and we've reduced this to a policy as well, is look at what the city's current needs are for recruitment. First, determine whether that position is even needed anymore, and can we eliminate positions. Council has been very good at that. The next part is to anticipate your future needs, right, and the current needs of the department. And so we're in that period where the engineer really makes sense. Going down and looking at the city planner, the city planner has been reclassified as having the zoning and planning administrator, coordinator, excuse me, zoning and planning coordinator working for them. I presented previously that we looked at zoning and planning as being meshed together. And the thing is, is with the evening meetings, with the scope of pay, with the workload and the other anticipated plans that we have for the city that are outlined in the Comprehensive Plan, we need to bifurcate a little bit the planning and zoning duties. It's obvious that when you're able to hire somebody who is like the Assistant City Manager, Amber Holloway, or like Erica Vogel, there's somebody who is able to carry that sort of workload. But this has been one that has transitioned, and that's really costly for the organization. And so looking at that and looking at the external review for the type of planner that you're looking for in order to lead this function, this is what looked appropriate as we updated that job description. Going down and looking to the Assistant Public Works Superintendent, there are a couple of aspects that make me bring this to you. One, there's been a period where we've had several retirements. We've had a couple of people exit from the organization. We have another person who's on deployment. With a new Public Works Superintendent in place, it's a good time to look at how those operations function in that department. What this will do is we'll give an unclassified, FLSA-exempt, meaning not eligible for overtime, individual who's able to come in to contribute to the workload as a working supervisor, but also to manage crews in a way that demonstrates expertise with utilities, with some of the general functions that we perform. And so I look at this as a good opportunity, and one where I don't see the city having additional outlays, because I would anticipate offsetting this by potentially hiring fewer public works technicians. I do see my ability to maintain top-tier leaf collection, snow and ice removal, running those sort of routes, and working optimally and just leveraging our equipment to work smart. And so, you know, I look at this, and I think one of the limiting factors that we've had is with our snow and ice removal, the city's kind of gone under the first impression of, for the three times that it snows throughout the year, we've got to make sure we have X full-time employees for the whole year. I think there are other ways that we can look at achieving that, and that you might not need to carry that full-time burden, especially given some of the productivity that we've seen recently. I say that saying that it is my intention to maintain really good snow and ice removal, and we're going to be able to continue doing that with this hire. And this is somebody that I see jumping in the plow as well. So if you sit in a job interview with me, I always ask the candidate in their hometown, especially if they're not from Vandelia. I ask them, what color are the roads when it snows in your hometown? And they say, white. And I say, well, you know what color they are in Vandelia, don't you? And they always look at me, and I say, well, they're black, because our public works keeps it nice and clean, and that's how we anticipate keeping it. And that's usually worth a laugh. So no offense taken by none of you laughing at my joke. I appreciate that, Bob. The other part is that, as I come down here...
Yeah, one question. The new superintendent that we hired several months ago, I forgot his name.
Wally Ritchie.
Has he had a lot of input into this position, I mean, into the restructuring you're kind of looking at?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I will say, too, that this is kind of a, this is kind of a more common way to structure a department that looks like this. The prior superintendent was, you know, an absolutely great person to work with and had his way of running the department, and did very well at that. And so with the new superintendent being in, looking at the different demands that I have of that department, this is a more optimal deployment of resources with built-in offsets that I hope council will consider and will accept with that. The other, the other portion that we have in here is looking to Class 6. There are two items that I'd bring to your attention. The zoning and planning coordinator position, that's the one that we had discussed, where this person will work directly with the Board of Zoning Appeals. They will be out doing inspections. They will provide specific information to residents and businesses when they come in. And this person would take over the supervision of the commercial and residential property maintenance functions. That's a position that we've talked about. This portion here with mechanic, I'm going to build you a bit of a clock before I tell you what time it is. In number five, the mechanic was previously in the same classification, number three as, as the, it was in number three with the finance clerk and maintenance technician. And so there were considerably lower rates that were in those. And we're currently conducting a recruitment to replace Brian Fox, who's been a longtime facilities mechanic out in Park and Rec, and we've gotten one applicant. And so when I presented this to you in December, and we passed this, you know, those figures were from early and mid 2021. And so looking at that, a lot has changed in the year, a lot has changed in the market. This is a very important position. This proposal for mechanic at the golf facility and mechanic at facilities maintenance lines up very well with the mechanics positions in the public works division. The one caveat, I would say, is that those mechanics out there have the ability to get more money if they obtain certain certifications relating to ASE certifications and also emergency vehicle technician positions. And so these ones would be paid just a little bit less, but also their work would be different. Now, the one thing about this is I bring it to you, and I say, we have a mechanic golf job description. If we choose to redeploy resources to restructure in a different way, if there's a retirement that occurs in the next five years, what I like is having mechanic golf here on the pay plan and going, okay, this makes sense to have, even if the position is vacant. So for instance, the finance assistant position is vacant, but it's in the general services pay plan. That doesn't mean that we hire for that position, because there's always, there's always the restraint with regard to what funds are appropriated for that corresponding staffing. And so I say this in this proposal of, I'd like to hang on to mechanic facilities, which we're recruiting for, mechanic golf. And then in speaking with Bow Townsend, representatives at Bow, who work at Bow Townsend, somebody who works at Grismer, and a couple of other people associated with the, you know, kind of private sector mechanics pay, you know, they've looked at our proposal, and they say, you're not going to get people who are qualified to do what you need them to do. Nobody's going to be like Brian Fox, right? Nobody's going to have that experience. But to bring somebody in who's going to be good and do what you need to do at facilities, you have to increase the range. So for the incumbent, the incumbent fits into that. You know, I, of course, would try to negotiate from the bottom and see where I could go from starting pay and have the flexibility to do that. With regard to the Assistant Golf Course Superintendent, this required a complete rework of this job description. And so Mr. Bailey, who's out there, manages part-time staff that wasn't accounted for, does a lot of work on the irrigation system, you know, excavates and patches, does a lot of stuff that's outside of the shop that wasn't included in his original portion. And so to look at that and to name his position mechanic is a bit of a misnomer. He's also a long-term employee who's been redlined. And so with this increase, he makes just over, I think it's $30.91, if I do that from memory. This increases his earning potential, which would only, of course, occur after a merit-based performance evaluation. And so I don't look at the budgetary impact as being make or break to the city or to the golf fund, but in many ways, it's a recognition of what the position actually is and actually does, which is at the core and spirit of the General Services Pay Plan. I'll bring you down to the classes, pretty much one through, oh, come on, pretty much one through eight. And looking at these, from the bottom, working your way up, we just went through an adjustment where there were significant increases to the part-time employees. In six or seven months, the jobs have changed. And so, and the market has changed as well, and we want to make sure that we're able to compensate appropriately and also retain the employees we have, but when we have vacancies, be able to conduct a competitive recruitment that results in a diverse slate of applicants. This proposal is based on that recognition of internal equity, but also understanding more or less what other positions are going through. And so I've worked with the Human Resources Manager, the corresponding department heads and supervisors, to kind of work through this. If I were you, my question would be, what major adjustments would I have to see, especially on the minimum? Does that make anybody go from the minimum where you have to increase their pay overnight? The answer is yes, but it's also not that bad. The, you know, with two recreation coordinators, and I'm looking for them on here, and the two recreation coordinators, these individuals in Park and Rec go up a dollar, probably, and those are people who are really good employees and really good producers. I wouldn't punish them in their merit-based performance evaluation or corresponding increase, but, you know, overnight, they would probably come up, they would come up to the $27. With the IT support specialist, there's one person who comes up, I think maybe 10 cents. And so this isn't to say that we're doing poorly in how we're compensating, it's to say that our lower end of our pay range isn't at a place where we can actually attract people and then have space to negotiate with them. And that's an important part of this. And so I bring those to you, the, you know, I'll bring this to you again at the end of the year. I think it's likely, our union increases are 2% for next year. It's likely that we'll look at all of this and add 2% to each one of those columns and do the routine maintenance. This is one where I've brought you several interventions, and I believe that there's a justified reason that's well thought out and well-vetted for each one, and that ultimately, while it seems like a lot of moving parts, there are offsets in that it isn't that expensive for the city if you take away the creation of the zoning and planning coordinator and also the engineer, which are essential for the workload that we planned, currently have and plan to have, and also legacy planning.
Dan, I think you gave us the number earlier, but what did you forecast the increase in cost is of the new plan, both immediately and forecasted in the future?
I did. The...
Because it will affect...
Yeah.
Our budget?
So the engineer will be broken up between general fund, utilities, kind of in the same ways that the public works, public service director is broken up. And so, you know, multiplying this by 2080, thinking 72,000, I will probably advertise to just north of 100,000. I am asking for a professional engineer who has five years of experience. And so that, I would come back to you at a later date to supplement those funds for that. For the zoning and planning coordinator position, which I'm absolutely going to get to, you're looking at 50s, low 50s is what you'd probably negotiate. I've got just over 54,000 is what that comes out to. I'm pretty certain that that person will be hired closer to that than the quartile or the midpoint of that range. With the recreation coordinators, you're looking at a couple thousand dollars. So every dollar is roughly $2,000, so probably less than $5,000 for them. They're not overtime-eligible. The, you know, and then the 10 cents is, the 10 cents on the IT, the network analyst, but all of these other ones work out pretty well with where people currently are. The fear is that you're not in a good position to conduct a good and competitive recruitment or to retain people, especially at the lower ranges on this.
So the net would be 100 for budget?
Well, I mean, it might be 100 for the engineer, which we discussed previously.
Oh, 100 plus the 50.
Plus the 50. So the, prior, we had spoken about the engineer and the zoning and planning coordinator. Those positions, you know, where I see, where I see the planner having more time to write grants, I see the engineer being dedicated to writing a lot of those grants. The engineer is somebody that's going to pay for their salary, just like Rob Cron does, where he came back and said, look, I've gotten you $6 million in grants in the last couple of years, plus all of these other parts. You're going to have offsets for that, but out of 100 and, if it's 160, only 10,000 is what we have in spoke. is what we haven't spoken about before. Sorry.
I just, a couple of things. One, I think, I know that a couple of us had addressed the issue with the, the turnover frequency in the city planner position and how that has a negative impact on, you know, keeping the momentum going. So I think that adjusting that and splitting that out is hopefully going to keep some, someone in that position a little longer than what we've, we've experienced here recently. I also, just in general, I think that's great. I mean, I know that in the past year, I think this is now the second or third time that this is, you know, we've seen this and that we've twice, and that we've tweaked it, and I think that's where we need to continue with this, especially the way the job market is. The mechanic, I'm still a little, I, I still think that's a low figure, just looking at a comparable city that has two mechanics, meaning it's about a $10,000, you know, we're still $10,000 lower even at that, that increase. So I'll be anxious to see, you know, with the adjustment, if we see more applicants come in. Because so far, we've advertised it at the current pay scale, right?
Right, which, which pretty much the top of it was around mid 25, like 2589 or something like that.
So I think that's one area that we may still struggle to find somebody, but you know, time will tell.
You have the flexibility here though to negotiate somewhere in between there, right?
Yeah, in, in between.
34, right?
Yeah, and, and that really is going to depend on the quality of the candidate. I also didn't want to get booed out of the room and be afraid to ever bring this back to you again. And so, you know, with that, I try to be, I try to say, I, I think this might get us over the line, and if it doesn't, I would come back, but I would be able to say, look, I've tried this twice. I'm trying not to jump to conclusions, and Councilmember Folic, I think that's very well received.
And I want to say too, that I appreciate how you've looked at each individual position. And I know this has been over a year in the making, and this is one of those items that we had talked to you about when first brought you on, and this was a priority, and to right-size this, so to speak, to make it a competitive legacy plan and all those things you described. And I think this is a good product of what you've brought to us and sound, especially since the research you've done and the time you've taken to look at that and example as the mechanic and go to the private sector and see and compare. And I think that's one of the things that was missing in the past, to look at that. Again, it's not really fair to compare private to, to public, but at least get a sense about that and get a, a beat or pulse on where we might want to be, to be competitive. So I, I appreciate you doing this, and as Councilman Folic said, that we've already seen this a couple of times. I think everything's well thought out and again, right for the organization.
I really appreciate that. And with that being said, I would, I would just ask that you approve this tonight, and I apologize, in our normal schedule, I would plan to bring this all to you ahead of time. With a peculiar summer schedule and the recruitments that we have pending, there's a little bit of an urgency, but the major portion of this, we've already discussed in a study session.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 22-R-49 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folic and a second by Vice Mayor Lewis to approve Resolution 22-R-49. Are there any other comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, the motion carries 7-0. We have one ordinance in its first reading, that being Ordinance 22-27. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance approving a planned unit development final plan for Sub Area A of Redwood-Vandelia Development for land generally located at 3900 Park Center Drive.
Mr. Webb?
Thank you, Your Honor. I apologize, I was conferring with the law director stating that, making sure that this doesn't need a public hearing, and it, and it does not, of course, in the first reading, which I'm sure you know. An ordinance approving a planned unit development final plan for Sub Area A of the Redwood-Vandelia Development for land generally located at 3900 Park Center Drive, that is all.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Ordinance 22-27 in its first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Farce and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve Ordinance 22-27 in its second, or first reading, excuse me. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yep.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, the motion carries 7-0. We have no ordinances in our second reading. We do have a couple of emergency ordinances, the first one being 22-25.
Directing the Board of Elections of Montgomery County to place on the ballot at the election to be held on November 8, 2022, the question of whether, whether the City of Vandelia should effect a governmental natural gas aggregation program with opt-out provisions pursuant to Section 4929.26 of the Ohio Revised Code and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Webb?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. If, if it pleases the Chair, I will speak to Emergency Ordinance 22-25 and 26 together, the only difference being electric and gas aggregation. Since our last meeting, I've continued, as has Law Director McDonald, research regarding opt-out, opt-in type of programs. I've met with a couple of suppliers who provide and businesses that provide electric and gas aggregation. In, in the research that I've conducted, one of the things that I've seen is that this sort of legislation is going on the ballot for many municipalities. That does not mean that I believe that it is right for Vandelia, it just means that I'm putting it in front of you for the option based on some of the feedback that you had received when there was a supply rate increase. It is 100% true that if the city were to get into an opt-out program, that there could be a, a rate that is locked in, and that a year from now, the rate could be, the rate could be less than that for supply. One of the things, when I brought this to the attention of some of the businesses, is they discuss this strategy where they blend, what they call blend and extend. And so by extending your contract, they blend down to a different rate for those folks that opt in. That's an option that's there. I put this in front of you saying that you have the option to take this to the voters and let them decide or to not do it, and I think that's okay with the opt-out program. My position, and what I'm recommending, is that if there's no action taken, that always it's a good time for residents of Vandelia to do the apples-to-apples comparison that's on the Energy Choice Ohio website. There are several good reasons for doing that, and one is to be able to control when they're going to be in and, and to take self-control of that. This sort of legislation may or may not protect somebody who does not choose to enter into an aggregation program or wouldn't opt out. The utilization rate of an opt-out program naturally is going to be much greater. At our last council meeting, council had requested some research about opt-in programs. Law Director McDonald has verified that that can be done through legislation without going to the ballot. There are still several studies that have to be done with relation to Public Utility Commission of Ohio, PUCO. The, one of the things that I heard again and again is that this is, an opt-in option is going to have about a 5% utilization rate, and because of that, the rate isn't going to be that good. What I'm pleading to you tonight is to, if your choice is to not do this, my recommendation is to also not do an opt-in program because of the staff resources that it will require with a relatively low benefit to the public. Instead, what I would propose is on our website and through social media, directing the public to the Energy Choice Ohio so that they can do their own self-directed opt-in. That would be my request to you is to not, to not direct staff to deploy resources for an opt-in program because I think the returns are quite low. If council does feel good about an opt-out program, then you're able to take that and put it on for the voters to choose. There are some mitigating factors. The one thing to recognize is that we wouldn't have to negotiate right away with the, we wouldn't have to negotiate this right away. So if, if you look at our legislative calendar, it passes in November, there's a bunch of studies and work that has to be done in the timeline in December and in January. By the time you get to a point where you're thinking about negotiating and actually seeing legislation for an opt-out program, that's about the time that providers like AES will be back to the market to shop supply again. This is what I'm told.
Annually.
Annually. And so the timing for this could actually be favorable depending on the lens through which you view the world. That is, that is very much from the lens of somebody who does aggregation as a business and a money-making venture. There's also the consideration of how much government do you want in your electric bill? And is it just fine to send people to the apples-to-apples comparison on Energy Choice Ohio? And so I'll leave that with you.
I don't know. What I've been hearing and what I've been told is that the choices on Energy Choice Ohio are not, not optimal, meaning they're not finding anything at a better rate than what they're paying, what they'd be paying, so.
They've gone up recently.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I have done a little bit of checking, and for example, Canton aggregated back in 2020, and their residents are stuck with their rate from 20 through 24 for gas. At, at that time, they, I think the rate is $4, or $2, 2.835. But the rate, if you look at the charts for gas, I mean, it's up and down, up and down, up and down. So it's, it was 2.835 back then, but you know, it, it could be more, it could be less, but we're kind of behind the eight ball because the prices are high right now. And so we, even if we aggregate, we're still not going to get this kind of rate. And so if we stick people with a rate somewhere between where we are now and what it could be at some point in time for four years, we can't say definitively that people are going to be better off. No one has that crystal ball, no one knows what those rates are going to do. And I don't want to force a lot of people by not reading something or not voting for something to be stuck in a program where they're going to pay more for energy. Back in 2000, what was it, 2000, 2005, I, I know everybody was going in, oh, you know, we can change, energy companies, let's change, we're going to get a better rate, we're going to do this. I didn't, and I'm, and they're stuck in a three-year program, I'm not, and I had better rates than they did. I'm not saying I know anything more than any other resident knows, I'm just saying I don't want to put somebody in a position where we have decided to cost them more money. That's, that would be my problem.
Am I, am I correct, though, this legislation, for us to even be able to even consider aggregation, we've got to get this passed at the ballot first?
If you want to-
This empowers council to be able to even to discuss it.
Whether it's in or out.
Just if it's an opt-out. But if it's an opt-in, I'm recommending you not do anything.
Right. But what I'm saying is, for us to be able to even have a discussion in six months, let's say next, let's say next May or March, when they go back to auction, the prices go up even more, and then we want to have this discussion again, we would have to pass this legislation before we could even start going down that path. If we pass, if we put this in front of the voters now and with some public education behind it, it gives us the ability, once the, if it passes, council then at any time in the future can pass legislation to go into a, am I saying this correctly?
Yeah, they would, you would go through the voters, that would give you the ability to do the opt-out, but then you would have to register as a supplier with PUCO and then get a contract with another supplier, things like that.
But putting this on the ballot, and if it passes, does not require us to go to an aggregation even in six months or a year?
No, it does not. And you could say, the reason we're not doing it is because it doesn't make financial sense.
Right. So-
It says that you have to develop a plan if it's passed. Local government must then develop a plan if you pass it.
And, and while we might have that plan, it, it also doesn't mean that council has to be presented with or approve a contract. And so that, that would be, that would be the limiting factor is, we bring something to you and we say, okay, we're going to enter into this agreement with Aspen Energy. And then, okay, we enter into that agreement. If we were to do that, then we wait and we figure out a day to lock in prices. If they're not even in the same realm of something that makes you feel good with, then you remain, your portion of the plan is that you're trying to identify the, that aggregator, for lack of a better term, the company that you want to work with, and you can be in process doing that.
And is this, is this great, once, if this is to pass at the ballot, is there an expiration to this, or is it, future councils are always empowered to potentially evaluate and pass legislation, or is there a sunsetting clause or an expiration to this?
In, in my research, the, what I heard a couple of different times is that there are people who passed it in the early 2000s and still haven't acted on it, but reserve the right to, should they decide to. And if that's wrong, I'll make sure that I get that back to you. But that's my understanding of it and what I heard repeatedly.
So I mean, I know that there are cities that have passed ordinances that have, but the council's never taken action on it, so there is no, you know, aggregation in those communities. And I, you know, so part of me thinks that we should put this on the ballot and give up, give the residents an option, and if they turn it down, they turn it down and then we're done. But if they want us to potentially look at it, then that gives, at least that check mark is off, and we then have the ability to start looking at that, should we, you know, should the situation get worse next year? And otherwise, we're going back to this point again, going, do we want to consider this in six months and start the process over again?
I think that's a very good point. I, I believe Councilmember Folic brought up that if you put this on and if it passes, the question that you have to answer is, does that mean that it's an imperative from the voters that you shall get into a program? And what we'll have to communicate is that we're only going to do that if it actually seems optimal and it's something we feel good about.
Since this is an emergency ordinance, I'll open a public hearing, so if anyone would like to speak on this ordinance, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your comment. Being none, I close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Emergency Ordinance 22-25.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folic and a second by Councilwoman Farce to approve Emergency Ordinance 22-25. Any other comments from council?
Well, I just want to say that we've, we as a council several years ago looked at this, and I guess I still have the thought that government should not be involved in this part of it, as we've, we've talked. I do understand that this sends it to the voters to decide for themselves if they want us to be, as their agent, to aggregate this for them. And I realize that it's at some point in time where we do enact it, maybe we don't enact it. But I, I just still feel somehow as a bill payer, that I'm responsible for finding that, and I think Ms. Wiggins gave a great presentation last time she was here, and if the bill payer understands that they go to Energy Choice Ohio or any bill that I have that goes high, let's say a cable bill, I'm going to look for a better price. Now, I do have to understand that it's going to go up and down. If I get the cheap price, it's probably, I lock in for two years and it's probably going to go up on me at some point in time because that's how, how it's done. But that's my responsibility as bill- But that's my responsibility as a bill payer. And I'm not sure that, and from, from experience from others that I've heard that have been in this program where the government has done this for them, or their entity, government entity has done it, they had no clue. And I know that we could advertise this, we could put it on social media, we could do everything and go to their door, to every citizen, and still you get the bill and say, well, who decided that? How, how did that get changed? And I know that happened to several people that have approached me about this. So they said, wait a minute, where, where did I lose control? Now, you didn't have, lose control, you just didn't, you know, realize that when you went to the poll, or others had gone to the polls, so the masses spoke for, for those that didn't realize that. And so I think, again, the education part of it should have been on, on that person to understand that. So you get the bill and you say, okay, I'm not paying what I've been paying. So that's the government part of it that I'm not comfortable with. Now, I'm okay with sending this to the voters, and that's the only reason I would be voting for this, because I'm not comfortable with having government interfere with my bill as bill payer. So I just want to, so.
All right. Thank you. Call the roll. Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
No.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbst.
Yes, and the motion carries 6-1. Next, we have Emergency Ordinance 22-26.
Directing the Board of Elections of Montgomery County to place on the ballot at the election to be held on November 8th, 2022, the question of whether the city of Vandelia should affect a governmental electricity aggregation program with opt-out provisions pursuant to Section 492820 of the Ohio Revised Code and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. And as Mr. Went mentioned, this is just the electric side of the previous emergency ordinance, so we're not going to have any further discussion on that. So I will open up a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on this ordinance, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your comment. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
I'll move that we approve Resolution 2226 as an emergency.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Fars to approve Ordinance 22-26 as an emergency. Are there any comments? Call the roll. Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
No.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herbst.
Yes, and the motion carries 6-1. That brings us to reports from boards and commissions, and we have a variance for landscaping at 1090 West National Road. Mr. Went.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. 1090 West National Road, the applicant, Sean Olson of Vancon General Contractor, has submitted an application requesting a variance to allow a reduction of perimeter landscaping along the east property line of 1090 West National Road. This, of course, is the Bow Townshend Service Center. The applicant is proposing to relocate landscaping that would be required on the east property line to the west in order to provide for better, better access to service bays. The Board of Zoning Appeals voted 3 to 0 to recommend approval of the variance request.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve the variance request at 1090 West National Road.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Ayers and a second by Councilman Follak to approve the variance for landscaping at 1090 West National Road. Are there any comments? Call the roll. Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbst.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have a variance for change of a non-conforming use, 217 South Dixie. Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. 217A South Dixie Drive, the applicant, Ms. Sarah Witt, has requested a change of a non-conforming use from an office to a personal service at 217A South Dixie Drive. The applicant has proposed to convert the office space to a hair salon with two service providers. The Board of Zoning Appeals voted 3 to 0 to recommend approval of this request, and it's in line with the prior uses on that property, and so no reservations whatsoever from a staff perspective.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move that we approve the variance change of a non-conforming use at 217A South Dixie.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Blakesley to approve the variance for change of non-conforming use at 217A South Dixie. Are there any comments from council? Call the roll. Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Council, excuse me, Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbst.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Council, you've had an opportunity to review the Planning Commission meeting minutes of April 12th and also the June 14th meeting. Are there any comments? All right. We'll move on to council comments. Mr. McDonald.
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a couple of items. I'd just say congratulations and thank you to Chief Follak, Chief Oldhouse, Director Clark, Director Cron, everybody that was involved in the Star Spangled Celebration. It certainly ended in the finale with my two-year-old chanting for America running through, not scared at all. So it was a great time, wonderful turnout. Annual paving program, milling is starting weather-dependent. You're going to see paving work start on James Bohannon on Saturday, the 9th. That's to limit some of the interruptions. We're going to get paving done in, in order so that it doesn't affect the airshow parade. I want to bring to your attention that Chief Oldhouse and the Police Division are hosting an open house on the 14th of July. That's from 5:00 to 7:30 PM. There's great, a great flyer, there's going to be food, and it's going to be really nice. Our next, we have an employee appreciation event that is pizza in the park that is going to occur at Helkey from 11:30 to 1 PM. You, of course, are all invited, and I would tell you what date that is, except for I didn't write it down right there, but it's definitely in the flyer. I want to point out that Chief Oldhouse and Lieutenant Suger just got a $9,300 grant for body armor. That's great, great use of taxpayer time, is to chase down those grants and stretch taxpayer dollars. So thank you, Chief Oldhouse, for that. If you've been out to the golf course, you can see the pits are dug for the restroom facility that's being paid for with the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Also, the restroom facility has gone vertical. I had the pleasure of reviewing the preliminary results of the scientific survey that we did, or that we're doing for the Park and Rec Master Plan, and adding and improving restrooms is one of the reoccurring themes, and so I think that was a good anticipation and a wide, wise use of those funds by council. I've invited you to go to Tri-Cities, our wastewater treatment plant, to take a tour of the plant. That's Thursday, July 14th at 4:00 PM, or Friday, July 15th at 8:00 AM. If those dates do not work for you and you would like to go on an optional tour to discuss the plant, I will coordinate with Mr. Knife to get you a one-on-one tour at any other time. I just tentatively reserve those two time slots. I also want to tell you that boards and commissions, we have recruitments up on the website, we have several positions, we've received three applications. I anticipate that some more of those will be coming in, and so we want to get those filled in. And if it pleases council, I would plan to bring a couple of those applicants on the 18th? Is it the 18th? To start to fill those in, Planning Commission and BZA, and so, just so that you, you will have them in front of you to consider. Previously, I'd reported that our online survey that we'd ended on July 4th, we're, Director Clark and I have decided to extend that online survey through the rest of the week through Sunday, so we're going to do one final push to let people participate in the community engagement portion of the Park and Rec Master Plan, and so that'll be up on the website, and we'll be doing that. That concludes my report. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilman Ayers.
Nothing, thank you.
Councilman Follak.
Just to echo Mr. Went's remarks to all the departments involved in, in the Star Spangled Celebration, also to recognize the Vandelia Butler Optimists Club on July 4th that morning, the mayor was, was present for the Freedom Bike Tour. We had over, last I heard, was over 650 cyclists that took, took part in that event, so it was a good turnout for that event, and I will tell you that Steve Reed and some of the other optimists that have been involved with it for 27 years have got that as a fine-oiled machine, and that's a, it's a very successful event, so congratulations to them. And then lastly, I just wanted to, I didn't, I was kind of caught off guard at the last, I was at the Planning Commission meeting on June 28th, as the mayor mentioned before, and Ms. Lori Hurtline has resigned from the Planning Commission, so that's another individual, another resident from Vandelia that has volunteered almost 21 years on Planning Commission, so between her and Ms. Johnson stepping down from that board, there's some big shoes to fill there. And lastly, I just want to recognize the members of the Planning Commission that were at that meeting. As someone that was on Planning Commission for seven years, majority of the time, the business that comes in front of the Planning Commission, it's just a couple of people in attendance, the applicant and, or the resident, or the, or the developer, and every once in a while, a topic comes up, such as the proposed development in Northwoods, where, you know, I, I don't know what the final count was, but I'm guessing there was at least 50 or 60 residents here that night, if not more. And at times, the meeting can get contentious, but I think, you know, Mr. Atkins and the other members of the Planning Commission did a very good job of, of running that meeting, giving residents the option or the opportunity to speak, so just congratulations to them and thank them for their, for their service and, and something, you know, especially when these are your neighbors and stuff, and fellow citizens that are, that are upset or emotional about an issue, to be able to handle that and run the meeting very efficiently, so thank you to them. That's all I have.
Councilwoman Fars.
Nothing this evening, thank you, though.
Councilwoman Blakesley.
Just to echo on the celebration, the, it's nice to see everybody back out and enjoying themselves, and I think after a time where, you know, distance isolated us, it's nice to see everyone come out and be in a family-oriented and just a gathering, and I think that's important for us, and to see both the communities, all the communities together and enjoy themselves in a celebration and a common cause and fellowship. Really glad that we do this, aside the fireworks, I think that's a nice part in Parks and Rec, and everybody does a great job, but it's just nice to see the citizens come out and be as one.
Thank you. Councilwoman Woods.
Just to say that I was afforded the opportunity to attend the Planning Commission meeting as well, and it really makes a big difference hearing the citizens in their own words rather than just reading the minutes afterwards. I really felt that was a great opportunity.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lewis.
Only to extrapolate from the Planning Commission meeting and would be to entreat our residents to continue their input, noting that our next meeting is on July 18th, and it's refreshing to have people in their community involved in the governmental process, certainly in a respectful way, whether your opinion is one way or the other, but I think that input is critical to a good functioning local government, and I think it's great that the folks in that area and others took it upon themselves to do that, and I, and I hope that they continue their passion and, and attend our meeting on the 18th.
All right. Thank you. The only comment I really had was, I also wanted to mention the Planning Commission and what a good job they did handling that meeting, and how much I appreciate it being able to sit in the audience and hear from the residents. As the others have said, that, that is so valuable for us to hear it firsthand versus, you know, reading it in the, in the minutes, so I appreciate the way they conducted that meeting and the professionalism, professionalism in the way that they handled it. Also, just the Star Spangled Celebration, it was a huge success, and I've heard a ton of positive comments about the, the celebration and staff and everything that was put on for the 4th, so. That's all I have. At this time, it's recommended to council enter into executive session to discuss the pending or imminent litigation to review collective bargaining strategy and the purchase of property.
Your Honor, I would just note that there's no action that's to be taken after the executive session.
Right, we don't anticipate taking any action after executive session. Can I have a motion?
So.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis and a second by Councilman Follak. Call the roll. Councilmember Follak.
Yes.
Councilmember Fars.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbst.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0.
Thank you.
So, I didn't know who all was going to be staying here.
Oh, well, I was just asking people if they need to.
She retired as well from KESR. And so she's like, I just want to be done with everything and not have any.
That's what I thought. I looked at her, I found out what she was doing, like, she was a small girl.
But they're down to three people now, right?
Yeah.
They better step up to this appointment.
Are we off Zoom and everything? Darren?
When she said that, I was like, whoa, I didn't know.
We kind of knew.
She was moving.
Six months would have us.
Where'd you, did you call me or?
I said, you know, back then, I'm going to be all the cases.
It went to him.
Okay, we're all clear.
I was like, I didn't get anything from you.
Hey, are we going to discuss, are we going to discuss KESR's pool? I got three, four calls in the last three weeks.
That's the possible purchase of property.
No, he's talking about the pool.
I'm about to pull, saying that they ain't want to send their kids there anymore. This is just unruly trash.
I've heard that before. I don't go, but I've heard that.
Thanks for the notes. Thanks for the notes.
You too.
We bought a ladder truck and we've got all this stuff, so maybe Bow Town should have bought a town.
He's saying closing to Justin.
Oh, okay.
No, I'm good.
Yeah.